Good morning, everyone. This is the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting. It's September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. The time is nine AM. Let's open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, to the justice, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ed. Could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Reagan.
President.
Commissioner Brand. Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Attorney Brooke.
Welcome back.
Next, we have appointments. Do you guys have any?
Yes, I do. I have good news for the Fair Board that Mr. Jim Low, who recently, few years ago, retired from Ball State, has agreed to be a board member for the Fairgrounds Board.
Jim Low?
Jim Low.
Hello, W E.
Is that a motion to nominate?
Yes, sir.
I'll second.
We have a motion to put Jim Low on the Fair Board and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. On the Board of Health, Jamie Bane's going to reach out to the mayor and see where he is with that final appointment. And Civic Center Authority, I spoke to President Piper. She said they're looking for somebody with legal background or an attorney. So anybody that is an attorney that would like to serve on the Civic Center Authority Board, please reach out to the Commissioner's Office.
And is that one of our boards that has to be balanced?
Um, yes, it is.
Yes, yeah.
So do you know which?
We're looking for a Republican.
Republican.
Very good. Thank you. We'll move on to table business. Is there any table business that either one of you would like to remove?
No.
Does it need to be removed later?
What?
This solar. We wanted to.
Yeah.
Vote on that today.
Um, that's the solar moratorium.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Next, under Presentations, we have the Road Right Away, Ashton's Land Surveyors.
Good morning. I'm sitting there. Didn't realize I was so early. I'm so happy to be early on the agenda. Thank you. Um, okay, I have two parcels. I'm trying to figure out which ones first, but we have one that's on fifty-nine fifteen North State Road Three, Muncie, and that is in the name of, that is the Herb's Platte. We are dedicating the Road Right Away right there in front of the property. It is on North Walnut Street here, and it's just outside city limits on Old, what would be Old Three. So we have just a little bit of road frontage that we need to dedicate on that one. I have gone through the planning or plating process, and we do have approval.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
I do not.
I do.
Entertain a motion of approval?
So moved.
Second.
A motion to approve and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Thank you. The second one? I.
Yep.
Am I on the agenda both times? Okay. The second one is a, can you hear me?
Barely.
Okay. Uh, the thirty, thirty-eight sixty east County Road six fifty south. And here it is, has a Muncie address. It is in Monroe Township. It is in the name of Schraut. Um, it is, we are dedicating the Road Right Away right at the front of his property to do a subdivision plat for him to be able to sell his house off.
I still move.
We do have plating approval. I apologize. Sorry, what?
I still move. Prove.
A second. A motion to approve this request and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Delaware County Sheriff's Office Firearms Training Facility. Mr. Payne.
Good morning. My name's Andy Payne. I'm the Training Director for the Delaware County Sheriff's Office. We'd like to request, um, to be allowed, or an ordinance to allow us a fee structure for the Delaware County Firearms Training Facility. Currently, uh, we're looking at a three-tier pricing system in which local agencies such as Albany, Eaton, Gaston, Selma, Daleville, Yorktown, City Police, Ball State, uh, the hospital would be allowed to train for free as they currently do. We think that it's critical that all of our local agencies have access to a firearms training facility. Currently in Indianapolis, there are only, uh, three ranges that are available for firearms training, and so we're receiving a lot of influx from departments like Noblesville, Speedway, Carmel, Lawrence, uh, that are requesting to use our range. Uh, currently in Indianapolis, uh, one of the few private ranges is charging almost five hundred dollars a day, and that is their law enforcement pricing. Uh, we'd like to, uh, ask that we be allowed to charge outside law enforcement agencies a one hundred dollar a day, uh, usage fee. Uh, and then the, the third tier of pricing would be for outside vendors. The Sheriff's Department has teamed up with a local training company called MTAC. Uh, and in our agreement currently, um, we're allowed to use their training facilities, and they're allowed to use our range. And under our initial agreement, uh, we were allowed two spots in any class that they taught at our range. Uh, because of some changes to their business model, they've been acting as a, as an intermediary to bring in some third-party training, which they've indicated they're unable to give us free spots in. Um, and so we'd like to be able to charge a two hundred dollar a day fee for those organizations. Uh, those include groups like Sage Dynamics, Lawyer Poet Society. They're national, uh, nationally recognized training, uh, groups that do provide high-quality training to law enforcement, but that currently, under our agreement, we're not receiving anything from. I sent Commissioner Brand, uh, a copy of our, of our kind of annual expenses. Our annual expenses run about five thousand dollars at the range. Um, those funds currently come from either my training budget, my firearms training budget, or through discretionary use of commissary funds when the sheriff allows that. Uh, by offsetting some of that cost, we'd be able to fund continued range improvements without a burden to the taxpayers.
So your fund, all these would go into a new fund?
Into a, or into my current firearms budget.
So you're asking for a hundred dollars per day for any outside law enforcement agency?
Correct.
And two hundred dollars a day basically for private?
That's correct.
Private organizations?
And zero dollars for anyone inside Delaware County?
Absolutely. And that also includes, um, you know, we have, uh, divisions of the FBI and ATF that will come and help with our training and provide us with, uh, you know, expert advice and training, and we wouldn't want to charge them either.
Is that enough?
I was wondering what kind of insurance policy maybe?
I guess I would seek guidance from you guys on that. I, I think that one hundred dollars a day is fair for outside law enforcement agencies. I, I know that I work with a budget, and, you know, I, I think that that would be an amount that outside agencies could easily support. Uh, whether two hundred dollars a day is enough for, for third-party, uh, groups, um, you know, I know that I have been to ranges that range from five hundred dollars a day to thirteen hundred dollars a day, but I also don't want to unfairly burden the students because a lot of them are law enforcement officers that are paying out of their own pocket that are going to absorb those costs. And I, I think that, you know, asking every officer that goes to those trainings to pitch in extra ten or fifteen dollars a day is doable, but if suddenly they're paying for the cost of the class, plus their ammunition, plus their travel, plus a range fee, I'd, I'd hate for it to be, um, too much of a burden for officers seeking training out of their own pocket.
Any other questions?
Yeah. How long is your contract with MTAC?
Um, currently, it's an open contract with MTAC. There's not a, a set date that I know of.
So the motion would be to approve the fees discussed today to be deposited back into the training fund for the Sheriff's Department?
For the firearms training budget.
Firearms training. So moved.
Second.
A motion to approve this request and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then if something happens, you feel like we may need to bump those up, please, get back with us.
Okay. Um, we already have some training scheduled for the year. Would that be something I could begin at the beginning of two thousand and twenty-six?
Yeah, just, yeah, absolutely. Just look at it next year and see, make, make sure we're charging enough is my thing.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Will we have to memorialize this in an ordinance?
Yeah, that's what we're just, we'll, we'll draft an ordinance that it goes into that particular fund.
Very good.
So in our next meeting, we, we hope to have this memorialized.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think we, um, I think we need to go back to, um, table business. I see Mr. Howard from the Land Bank here.
Okay.
And I did not see him. Mr. Howard. I'm sorry, I didn't see you back there. So let's go back to table if we can.
Are you, uh, are you suggesting we take the property requested by Mr. Howard off the table?
Right.
You making that a motion?
So move.
A second.
A motion to remove that from the table in a second. Roll call, Ed.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes. Nate, um, one thing that we haven't discussed on these properties that we're offering you. At one time, we talked about some money.
Uh-huh.
Being maybe given to us, and we haven't sat down and discussed how much maybe.
What's the minimum bid at a deed sale? These properties are deed sale properties, correct?
Our minimum was eight ninety-five.
Eight hundred and ninety-five? Okay. And the original request was for a, I can't remember, forty-seven, fifty-three properties, something like.
Forty-five properties.
Forty-five properties, thank you. And then, um, some of the properties that you had requested were recently, um, transferred to the Muncie Redevelopment Commission.
Mm-hmm.
And then some of the properties that you had requested were still testing if they've received proper service in the deed sale. So I'm not clear on which properties exactly would be in discussion today. Are you?
Um, I mean, I think, I, I, I think there are thirteen properties that we're talking about, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, I was.
I was thinking it was thirteen.
We need to vet. I, I have, I think we need that list of thirteen. Provide us that list, and then let us, uh, give it to, um, our attorneys and Ed and make sure before, I think, before we can discuss it.
Yeah.
You agree?
Yeah, I don't disagree. Just to be fair, there was a little bit of pre-work done, but I, I don't know that I'm still clear on exactly which properties. So there were two lists, a List A and a List B, um, that I still think we need to combine those lists or vet those two lists. Do you agree, Mr. Howard, or do you know the addresses of the thirteen properties?
I mean, I, I think, but if, if we need to take, uh, some time to go through that and make sure, that's fine. It would be helpful for me to know what we're, what we're asking for, whether they're deeds or certificates, and then if there is some money being, um, yeah, part of the deal, then I would need to get that vetted with my, my board. So I, I don't know if that's something we do in a public meeting or we do.
I think you should vet your board to see if they're interested in potentially paying the minimum bid for these properties.
Okay.
But we need the list to see if they're even available.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Okay. Can you provide that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for being here today.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm making a motion, we put it back on the table.
Second.
A motion to table this again and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. All right, we'll go to contracts and agreements for approval, the strategic energy audit. Commissioner Brand?
Yeah, so talked about this, just in passing a couple of times, about AEP agreeing to pay for an energy audit of the county's buildings, specifically the county building here, the Justice Center, uh, the Health Department, and, uh, the Highway Garage. We'll start there, but we would eventually do all. Basically, this is an approval, uh, a, a customer participation agreement. We've met the program eligibility, so all that work's been done. Uh, if this board approves the customer participation agreement, then we'll sign it, and then, uh, Mr. Chambers and I will get with American Electric Power and Clear Result and get this kicked off.
Could we add the Fairgrounds, some of their big buildings that have?
Which building specifically?
I would think the Heartland, Memorial, and the community.
Yeah. So the, the answer's yes. Uh, would you like those done in the first round? So what we did is we went by a meter and tariff rate and the amount of kilowatts used and the highest bills first, and they are this building, um, the Justice Center, the Health Department, and then the Highway Department. So those buildings you mentioned fall just outside the top ten.
They, they would be very small, but one thing we need to help them, I was out there last weekend, and they have seventeen bills that come in. So if they could, if we could get AEP to even consider.
Consolidating?
Consolidate.
That means they, if they have seventeen bills, that means they have seventeen meters.
That's right.
So I, I don't know if that's an I U R C deal, but I will ask them.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I'm asking for approval to, uh, approve the customer participation agreement that you have in front of you.
Second.
So I have a motion to approve this and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Thanks for working on that.
Commissioner Red.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
We have the Village Parking Garage.
Yep. So this, uh, the agreement you have in front of you, Jenna put it on the county's letterhead, is basically a comfort letter that the Commissioners are supporting the Assessor's Office in the matter of the Village Parking Garage. And make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the letter in a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Next, we have the Marathon Contract, which, um, we, we just received this, and I, I know there was some emails floating them back and forth this weekend, but I would, uh, I'd like to table this. So we have more time to review.
I agree. I'll make a motion to table, and, and, uh, it was received on Saturday. I appreciate their effort, but there just wasn't enough time to vet this, and I think legal still needs to take a look at it.
As well.
Yep.
Yeah, second.
So I have a motion to table in a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Is Brad back up here? Brad Polk?
I'm gonna pass him and come back if he should.
Yeah, he, he said he was coming back, so we'll, we'll, uh, we'll bypass Brad. Uh, we don't have any ordinances for first reading. Uh, ordinance twenty-five dash nineteen, ordinance to amend the ordinance regulating traffic on certain public streets in Delaware County.
So this was introduced at the last meeting. This is the second reading. I don't have any comments or questions.
So move.
A second. And let me be clear, these are the ones concerning truck traffic, um, down around four hundred south, sixty-seven, there's, um, six hundred west, seven hundred west, eight hundred west, um, some of those roads, but it, it kind of revolves around four hundred south.
Yeah, basically goes from Cowan Road all the way to State Road thirty-two.
Yep. So we have a motion to adopt.
And a second.
And a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Next, we have ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twenty, uh, being a resolution of approval to amend the text of the Delaware County Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance Regarding Solar Energy.
So late in the week, we received, uh, some feedback, a couple of recommendations from American Electric Power, went to, uh, the Planning Commission, and I think Kyleen sent those to us. Is Kyleen here? Kyleen, do you wish to speak at all on this? If you don't, that's fine.
She, she did, she did receive those as well as, as well as us. Uh, Kyleen and I have been discussing this. Um, I would like to review, I'd like a little more time to review this. I would also like, um, we, we still have to work on the property value guarantee language. And quite honestly, before I, uh, vote on this, I would like all of that in this agreement. I would, I would like, I would like some language cleared up.
I, I don't disagree. I, I want to clarify a few things for the public because a lot of people are here today to, to listen to this. The stuff that American Electric Power is wanting is specifically around, um, substation setbacks, poles and underground wiring, fencing, and commercial battery energy storage systems. And they basically don't want this ordinance to set the rules for their own projects that are not related to solar projects. So they're asking to delineate between, uh, a solar project and, uh, and their own project. That's number one. And the clarification on the property value guarantee language is not necessarily to change it, but to clarify it per. I believe Marla Hoff was, uh, spoke at a previous meeting and asked for some clarification on a couple of things, and it, the property value guarantee is only to clarify.
Correct.
Okay.
With regard to the consideration of the ordinance, according to the statute, you can accept the ordinance as written, you can reject it as written, you can modify it and send it back to the Plan Commission for consideration, or you can conduct another public hearing and consider it at a later date. You have to do that within ninety days of the date that it was presented to you, which I think was September fifth, if I remember right. Um, so if you want to modify it, you could modify it, you could table it and modify it and send it back to the Plan Commission for consideration.
So do, do we consider September fifth the official certification date of amendment?
That's when I received it. Is that, is that the date? I asked you, Kyleen, is that the date that you're considering? Yes.
Okay. Well.
We, we have time, and it's, I'll be honest with you, it's not, it's not correct, or it's not complete, in my opinion, right? That's just my opinion, but it's not complete. It's a little fuzzy. And I would like it completed before we, I mean, we, we've, we've waited this long. I want to complete it.
So you want a clean copy of the, the, the clarification of the property value guarantee and consideration for American Electric Power's clarifications?
That is correct.
I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
We have a motion to table in a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Okay, uh, we have resolutions for approval. We have a resolution of Delaware County adopting the Delaware County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Mr. Cutino.
Morning Commissioners. John Cutino, EMA Director. I know you guys adopted this or approved this multi-hazard mitigation plan. This is just a resolution saying that you did adopt this and have accepted it as a plan for the county. It's, it's just from the state side of it. It's paperwork that they need with our in-kind match, if you don't mind.
Do we have a copy of that in our packet?
I don't see it.
It's not in the packet. So, uh, John, did you, have you wrote that resolution?
I think John sent us a resolution.
It was a, the template mistake.
Template, yeah.
Correct.
Okay. So, um, let's, um, if you can get that ready for next meeting.
I will.
Let's table this resolution.
Okay.
And then we'll, we'll vote on it next meeting. Is that, is that okay?
Yeah, I, I think that I have till November first to send in all my in-kind and paperwork for the match portion, so.
Okay.
And that would be one of the pieces that goes with it, so.
Okay. But we, we'd be okay to table it?
Perfect.
Entertain a motion for table on that resolution.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioners.
Old business, we have dispersment requests.
Yeah, this is the B O T for the mental health facility. This would be the final payment from BW. They had asked us to approve this probably four or five weeks ago, and we said we wanted to hold it, um, until some more things were completed. Um, the, the last thing we were waiting on was the Comcast, and in my opinion, uh, BW has gone above and beyond to help us get that done. That was really the responsibility of Recovery Solutions, and, you know, it looks like we may potentially be going in a different direction there, so I would make a motion to approve this final payment request from BW. Um, I'll give you the exact amount. Two hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-seven cents, two-five-four-five-nine-zero-point-three-seven. And this is paid out of ARP. That's where we've been paying it out of, right?
Second.
Well, a motion to re, approve that request in a second. Ed, do you have that total?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Thank you. Next, we have Department Heads of Elected Officials, Kathy Butterfield. Let me talk about the inkeeper's tax. Yeah.
Good morning. Kathy Butterfield, Chief Deputy Treasurer. It's come to our attention, it, so when the Delaware County Fair deposits their checks for their camping or whatever they bring in, they usually used to do it in checks or cash. Well, now it's come to my attention because it's coming through E F Ts. When it comes through an E F T, it comes across my, my email. So I was looking into it to see if they are supposed to be paying an inkeeper's tax so I can keep them in compliance. I reached out to the Fair Board, and they said they were exempt, so if that was the case, they were unaware. I said it, I mean, we'll need to dig into this because even though you're exempt doesn't mean it keeps you exempt from that tax. So I reached out to the business compliance, tax compliance, and they responded that if they have camping, that, that tax needs to be paid. So therefore, I sent it to, um, to Commissioner Henry and Eugene Whitehead from the Council and had a small conversation with Shannon, and he said we would discuss it today. Today also, I got a, um, email from the business tax compliance again, and it says, depending on the county, the types of accommodations may include but not are, are not limited to cottages, tents, fixed trailers, houseboats, craft with overnight facilities, campsites, regardless of the amenities, such as water and electricity are included, space camper parks and trailer parks where spaces are offered for rent for periods more than thirty days. It changes a lot of things with this. I feel like I do need to get more information, but I do think it's something we need to address. Prairie Creek does charge an inkeeper's tax for their cabins, not for their campers. So I don't know if that will change that as well, if we say that the fairgrounds has to pay an inkeeper's tax on their campers. But I just want to make sure it's across the board, and I'm within my guidelines because in my audit, I want it to show the right way, and whatever we decide, I want to put it in our inkeeper's files. That way, I'm up to date.
Mr. Brook, are you aware of any kind of ordinance that addresses this?
No, I'm not, not aware of any ordinance. I did do a detailed response. I mean,
Yeah.
I don't necessarily agree with the state because the language is real specific in a tax. And it doesn't include, doesn't specifically include camping. As I read the statute, so I disagree with Department Revenue on their interpretation, but I think it's worth to take a look at as it relates to, you know, the other areas in, in the county and the city. And Department Revenue, you know, I don't think the county is going to sue Department Revenue to challenge this, but somebody else may, but right now, the Department Revenue says this has to be part of the inkeeper's tax.
Yeah.
So there's a question about, do we go back, right?
Do we charge them, and then if we do charge them, do we go back?
Yeah.
They don't, from what I understand, they do not have a lodging facility. It's they bring their campers for like the dog shows or the, any of that, and they have their own, but that's the same as Prairie Creek. So if that's the case, if that's how we're going to hold that standard, because if we switch it, then we also need to readdress how we do Prairie Creek.
What was the last part of what you read from that business tax and compliance response about 30 days?
Um, facing camper parks and trailer parks where spaces are offered for rent for periods of fewer than 30 days.
Fewer than 30 days.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I just think it'd be a problem to start doing that, but to go back, I think would.
And also, this tax, it, it doesn't come here. It's not, it's not ours. It goes to Destination Muncy, so it's not anything we're imposing on.
Right. It's just something that's been overlooked in the past, and we need to clean it up.
What do other counties do?
I have emails out. I haven't heard back from them. This all kind of just came up the end of last week. I was off on Friday. When I checked my email this morning, I didn't have anything, but I'm going to work hard on it this week to get more information.
Yeah. I would hate to impose a tax that cause people not to come to our community and participate in the fairgrounds events. You know, that may cause the fairgrounds to not be able to host events if they don't have enough participation, so.
Well, that would be true when the carn, carnival comes. He has all his workers that stay in up.
Is, is, is there a recommendation of what percentage they would charge?
Yeah, what, what is the tax? So they have a tax form. And this is how it works. All the hotels, the motels, the Airbnbs, they all have a tax form that they fill out, and I believe it's, is it seven percent or eight percent of the, of what they bring in for the month? And then they have to have that into us by the 25th of every month. We record it, collect it, and then we send it to Destination Muncy.
We would need some education on it, that's for sure, how we're going to do it.
And you're still gathering information, so do you have a recommendation for the Commissioners today?
I mean, I would, I would let me get some more information and see what the other counties are doing. Because, I mean, like you said, if it, if it doesn't need to be there, obviously, it doesn't. My thing today is I just want to stay within my guidelines. That way, when I'm audited, I'm fine, because right here it says. But I, I mean, I don't see, I don't know, honestly, I don't have a, I don't know if this is the right way to word it, but I don't have a dog in the fight. I just want to make sure I'm within compliance.
And I, I get it, and I, we appreciate that. Why don't we, why don't we let you get some more information and table this, get some more information, and come back to us?
Yeah.
And, and at that point, see what the other counties are doing, and maybe make a recommendation.
Okay.
Okay?
Appreciate it. I move we table.
I, I'll second, and I just want to be clear. So you're looking for the Commissioners to either adopt or reject an inkeeper's tax for this so that you can pass a compliance audit?
And then you guys, so the Commissioners will also be the ones that set the guidelines on how we tax, who we tax. It's not necessarily we tax, it's the state.
Yep. Understand.
Could you forward any information you get from the other counties? Could you forward it to us and our council, please?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And while we're at it, we might look and see what other campgrounds are around here that we need to be.
I don't think we're worried about other campgrounds where.
Well, I'm just saying.
The only thing would be is if, my question would be, is if they're bringing campers in to the fairgrounds and we're charging for the campers, Prairie Creek already pays for their lodges. Do you want Prairie Creek to pay for their campers? Because I don't know, can you do one over the other? I don't think so. I think it's going to be same across the board.
I don't know. I need to study it.
Yeah, we, we need, we need to figure it out. So we have a motion to the table in a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Rigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Brad Polk. We're going back to you, the Agreement for Tax Sale Legal Services.
Okay. With the swap, swap spots here.
Yep.
So I had sent out to the Commissioners Council a, an agreement for Buchanan and Bruckerschmidt. They are tax sale specialist attorneys for, coming up on, we're coming up on the tax sale. And so we're looking to get approval of this agreement for their service, for their legal services, for the tax, specifically for the tax sale.
I haven't had a chance to review this. I did, I just saw in the packet
Okay.
when I got it today.
Is this the same company we've used in the past?
We have not. This is a, a new company. The, so Alex Bruckerschmidt has been doing tax sales or involved in tax sales as legal, presenting, presenting his legal advice and, and, and working with counties for 15-plus years. And so that is basically all this company will do is, is our tax sale.
And this would propose the rate of $250 an hour?
Yes. And a county our size, they're, they're, they're probably looking at about, they said between 50 and 70 hours of work for a tax sale. Our vendor does a lot of it. They're just, you know, going to be giving advice and, and working with that vendor on, on tax sales.
Why are we not using the same company we used in the past?
So we've had some issues as far as like getting, getting back information in a timely manner. And with tax sales, there are deadlines, specific deadlines that have to be met throughout the total time of, up, leading up to the tax sale. And so we've had some problems with that in the past, and so that's why we're looking at the new, new company.
One concern I have is Mr. Bruckerschmidt does represent companies or individuals that buy tax sale certificates, and I've, I've had occasions where I've had to, to go to court representing the county, and he's representing an individual. I'm wondering about a potential conflict of interest on those. I, I think he's got two or three that may be pending now that I'm aware of.
That's interesting.
Yeah, so with, we, we did speak about that. He did let us know ahead of time that he did have a couple. He just would not be able to represent us in those. If, if we needed to go before the judge, he would not represent, be able to represent us.
And did he say he would stop?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. If, if that's the case, then obviously, when those are done, we're looking at next, next, you know, for next year, he would not have, be representing any clients.
I'm going to be honest with you, I don't feel, I don't feel good about that at all.
If, if Brook and Struble can represent the county in the cases where Brook and Schmidt can't, can they just represent the county in all the cases? Or, or to, to do this work? Their, their, their fee is $200 an hour. This fee's $250 an hour.
Right. So there are, like I said, there, there has been in the past some time, time-sensitive answers that we need to get back, and, and we have not, we've had some, some issues with that in the, in the past couple of years. And so, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to have to postpone the tax sale or not have a tax sale because we didn't meet legal requirements. This, this allows us to move forward on that and, and actually make sure we guarantee that the county will have a tax sale every year. And that's, that's what we're, that's the whole driving point, is to make sure that we don't end up not having a tax sale because something's not, a requirement's not met.
I think we've met all of the requirements. I disagree. I mean, we've been doing this for a couple of years now, and we've had some, some problems, but with some of our vendors, and but I would like to take a look at this agreement and have a discussion about the, the conflict of interest because it, he's, he's represented these individuals in these other tax sales before, so.
Any comments?
Well, I'm of the opinion that Mr. Carroll and Mr. Polk run these tax sales, and that we should support them. But I'm good to table it if you want to.
I'll second that.
You want to table the contract? Is, is there time, Mr. Polk?
There is, I mean, before, our, our next tax sale is October 15th. So obviously, and I will be out of town for the next Commissioner meeting. So if we push it back, the one after that, it would be the Monday after the tax sale.
When, when did you want them to start taking over?
They could start whenever the, the agreement would be signed. But obviously, if it's going to be tabled, then we would just probably start next, next, with next year's tax sale.
I mean, our legal counsel is advising us that he wants time to investigate this.
I understand that, yeah.
We have a motion to table in a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other Department Heads, elected officials?
Oh, there's Purdue.
Yep.
Morning, Justin Curly, Purdue Extension. I just wanted to take a moment to come up this morning and introduce you to our newest staff member. Vicky Gasaway joined us last week as our 4H Extension educator.
Thank you, Justin. Yes, so some of you know me. My name is Vicky Gasaway. I'm bringing 18 years of teaching local high school student science here in Delaware County. Lifetime member of Delaware County, former 10-year 4H member as well, and two years of former Purdue Extension experience to the table, so.
Welcome to the county building.
Thank you, Sherry.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. If there's anything we can do, let us know.
Thank you. Thank you for your continued support.
Thank you.
We need to promote 4H more. Matter of fact, I used to have a sign-up here, because when is the new sign-up dates?
October.
October. Thank you. Come back and.
Will do.
Shoot. Thanks, Justin.
Any other Department Heads or elected officials? Okay, we'll go on to the weekly and monthly quarterly reports. We have a payment of claims of $4,292,302.80. Part of that's riverboat, lit, and wheel tax. Commissioner Brand, do you have that broken down?
I do. So wheel tax, in these claims today, $203,310.8 of that Delaware County receives $81,999.95. Riverboat wagering tax, all in, $317,235.2 of that Delaware County receives $80,103.24. Lit certified shares came in, total $1336,948.92. Delaware County receives $478,958 of that. Public safety lit, $557,062 total. Delaware County share $206,469.41. And economic development income tax, otherwise known as EDIT, $891,209.25 all in. Delaware County's portion, $481,630. And there were about $43,000 worth of credit card claims with no explanations.
But I did notice the descriptions was doing better.
We are getting better. There's zero description on the credit cards. And did we switch credit card companies?
No.
Okay.
Yeah. I would like to see the buildings on that second line that utilities go to.
Which building it was for? Yeah, that'd be a big, big improvement. In the last meeting, there may have been some ARP claims in the payment of claims. Do we need to amend the numbers that we approved in last month, in the last meeting, or are they all still correct?
You asking me?
Yeah, anybody. So some of the ARP claims were in the payment of claims. And the, the ARP amount we approved, I'm, I'm asking, was it, was it correct? Because we approved those numbers in the last meeting.
I don't know what's the purpose of answering that question.
Okay.
Tanya Dunsmore, Chief Deputy Auditor. I thought I got with you later on that day and let you know that all the numbers that you read were correct.
Okay, that's good. Okay, thank you.
And if we could get together on the credit card, because that's paid out of our office, but what happens with that is all of the departments turn in their individual claims for the credit card, then one payment is made. So trying to put an explanation on one payment for every single department is impossible. So if we could invite you in to show you how that's done, and maybe we can go from there on a compromise as to what you receive to view.
Can you put the department?
It's going to be all departments.
What account it's coming from? Instead of, now, now you have to look at it. You got to go through it.
And maybe multiples.
Many multiple.
It, it takes, it takes a little bit because you got to, you got to look at the number, and then you got to go to the back of the page.
This is the reason I brought up this issue a year and a half ago about using credit cards for all these different types of payments.
Yeah.
The, the, the resolution is to pay it through the regular claims process, not use credit cards.
Right.
So if you want that, that's what has to be done.
I got you.
I will, I will come meet with you. What I'd like to do is pair our bills on time. And also, any, anything we're using credit cards for, if we can get an on-call agreement, set up an account at these places so the departments can go direct and pay it, pay it through the claims and not have to use a credit card, that'd be ideal. I'll get with you.
Great.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so.
Make a motion to pay.
We have a motion to pay the claims?
Second.
We have a motion to pay the claims in a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
No.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Next, we have the payment of ARP claims of $213,289.60.
That was mostly.
It was cobalt silver, civil to Delaware Regional Wastewater District, $45,098.57. And the final payment to E and B for the Justice Center parking lot drainage and resurfacing, $168,191.30. I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve the ARP claims in a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Rigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Next, we have the payment of payroll for 910 of 25, $1,42,481.10.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion to pay payroll in a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Thank you. We will move on to public comment.
Tommy's got the list. Thank you, sir. Black Hat T-shirt.
Thank you, Tommy. We, we'll start public comment. Please limit your comments to three minutes. John, will you keep time for me? And Robert Coaster, the first person that signed up?
Yes, thank you for your time. My name is Robert Kester. It's, I live on West Burnell Drive here in Muncy. Regarding the solar ordinance, I had a general question which has to do with conflict of interest. I'm wondering about the complications of Commissioners that might have family members that have farmland that is somehow influenced or affected by the proposed ordinance. And if, in your role as a Commissioner, it would be wise to recuse yourself from the vote. I'm also wondering if, with regard to the original task force that was created several years ago and the proposal that they brought forward, which is a compromise between advocates and objectors, that was set aside and totally rewritten by a member of the Commission. And so I'm wondering if that creates a conflict of interest on that person's part, because if they're the author of the document, do they not have a conflict of interest voting on it, particularly if they also sit on the Planning Commission? So it's just a question I'm raising. Seems like there is conflict of interest.
It's not in my family.
Thank you. Next is Cheryl Swingley.
Cheryl Swingley, Delaware County. As we're still waiting for an ordinance to be passed, I would just like to remind you that if you accept this ordinance, you're probably going to reject some good-paying union jobs that I estimate would probably be about $52,000 a year. And I want you to keep that number in mind, 52,000. And you're also getting ready to turn down business from a major industry, and that's the utility solar industry. Um, and you're also getting ready to turn down business from a major industry, and that's the utility solar industry. We want jobs in Delaware County, and I used your favorite tool, AI, this morning. And our jobs are declining in Delaware County, according to AI. So, um, I don't know what we're going to do about that when we're turning down a major industry. Uh, seems short-sighted. Uh, in addition to jobs, I'd like to see good-paying jobs. And the kind of jobs that we've attracted are like hotel jobs and those kinds of things, and they pay maybe ten, fifteen dollars an hour. But, you know, that's twenty thousand to twenty-five thousand dollars a year. It's hard to live, I, I don't even know how people live on that. Again, fifty-two thousand dollars. Um, I have from a resource, and Jim Mogul called this to our attention. Delaware County is fifth from the bottom in Indiana for median household income. Forty-five thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. That's our average wage in Delaware County. Randolph County, which I know you hate to hear about, is number thirty-three. Their average income is fifty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars. Uh, they have a slightly higher, more than a hundred thousand dollar income, sixteen point four, we have sixteen. Not significantly, uh, there's no significance really to that. We're pretty equal there. And our household earning less, uh, than fifteen thousand dollars is six, sixteen percent in Delaware County and eleven percent in Randolph County. And that was in twenty-twenty. So I don't know what's happened since then. Uh, let's see. Finally, uh, we want people, we want people to move here, according to the Albany Town Hall meeting. Well, it's not happening. Even though we had an increase, we still had more people leave, so we're still down like more than two hundred people. And as of July twenty, twenty, July twenty twenty-four, Delaware County ranked seventy-seventh out of ninety-two Indiana counties for population growth. Wow, okay. Uh, our air pollution is bad here, and mainly it's because of Indianapolis and Carmel. We get lumped into that. And our water quality, uh, although I, I will give kudos to the water company, and I promote drinking tap water. Uh, it's probably safer than bottled water. Um, but we've got some problems with some of our ditches.
Thank you, Cheryl.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Jackie Sheets. Ms. Sheets. Dan Berry.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, I'd like to talk about the new solar ordinance. Uh, the biggest problem I have with the solar ordinance is the origination of it. Where it came from, it just happened to show up, and then all this controversy over getting it adopted. The study group spent a lot of time, their own personal time and energy, going through everything on the ordinance, and we had a decent ordinance. One, that the solar developers that are here now started leasing land four or five years ago. And then now here, all of a sudden, you're wanting to change the rules of the game. And all I can say, it's very bad for business. And Delaware County has had a long history of business not coming to Delaware County, being turned away and going to adjacent counties. So we have missed out on a lot of tax money, and I think at a time when the property taxes are being cut to the city and the county, the solar companies in here are going to start putting some money into the tax reserves. And that should help out, maybe something more serious like a income tax won't have to be put on the residents of Delaware County to make up the shortfall. So I'm saying that the solar companies will help and also help a little bit on electricity into our grid. And just, uh, so it's, and another thing is time for Delaware County to stop listening to all the NIMBY people out here that have turned away business for the last thirty years, and I think we could have improved on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Doug Marshall.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, I want to begin by sincerely thanking you, uh, for the time, effort, and consideration you have given to the issue of, of industrial solar development in our county. For years, this has been a complex and sometimes difficult process for you. You have listened to residents, studied the issues, and shown your commitment to protecting farmland while also planning responsibly for the future. I especially want to thank you for the solar moratorium that you enacted months ago. And that was a wise and thoughtful decision. By choosing to pause, you gave yourselves and this community the opportunity to step back, reflect, and carefully evaluate the impacts, uh, before moving forward. That kind of leadership takes courage. And it showed that you put the long-term good of this county above rushing to meet outside pressures. The time you created with that pause has made all the difference. The Planning Commission has now thoroughly reviewed, uh, the proposed ordinance that you have sent them. And their strong vote of eight to one in favor shows both the depth of their work and the broad support, uh, for this approach. Their decision reflects months of study, public input, and careful consideration. I believe their recommended, recommendation gives you a solid path forward. Uh, they recognize your good work and supported, and supported it. I encourage you to take the recommendation and approve this ordinance. And doing so will safeguard valuable farmland, preserve the rural character and agricultural heritage that generations have built, and provide clear and balanced direction, uh, for the future. On behalf of myself and many others in this community, thank you again, uh, for your hard work, your patience, and your leadership. The choices you make today and beyond, uh, will shape our county for decades to come. And I'm grateful for the thoughtful way you have approached this important issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Joe Russell.
Joe Russell, thirty-five zero one East seven hundred North Eaton. Today, I want to talk about something you've all noticed that it's been extremely dry lately. Uh, very little rain since July thirty, August first. And some counties are starting to put burn bans on. I think there's eleven counties. Our corn is, is rapidly turning dry brown, and it's at a stage that, that it would burn. Commissioners are one group that can put a burn ban on, I believe. And a lot of that's just an educational tool to inform people, don't burn trash, you know, be careful. Um, I would rather have it put on earlier than late. One map I just saw had, uh, spilled it over into OI and Illinois. It's the driest place in the nation with, uh, San Joaquin Valley in California, which is always dry. So I'm just saying, I'd rather be a little proactive on that. Over the years, I noticed most of the fires on our farm, um, they'll start along the road. Someone throws a cigarette out, burns through the side ditch, and then the field gets on fire. Second, people burning trash spreads into the field, especially on windy days. Third, maybe farm machinery has a hot bearing or something. We're, we're putting a tank on our grain cart. We got a tanker ready to go. But, uh, if you want to put a burn ban on it a little earlier, um, it wouldn't bother me a bit. And o- once a cornfield burns, the corn has, it, it has that smoky, um, even though the ears may still be hanging from a sock, it really has no use. I mean, animals won't eat it. It's just, there's just nothing good about it. So just a, just a thought. I save my other speech for next time.
Thank you. Is John still here? Cuttino, are you out in the hall? There he is.
Yes.
Um, help me refresh my memory. Last, the last burn ban we did, didn't the fire chiefs request that? Is that right?
Correct. Yeah, we, I can go to them. We talked about that, uh, already this morning, just because we're supposed to have still a long draw of warm weather this week. And what rain we had on Saturday was probably not enough to satisfy the ground, so.
So you have talked with, you have spoke with the fire chiefs about that?
Uh, not all of them yet. I can.
Are they in favor of it, you know? Some are, some aren't, probably?
Some probably are, but I can check with all of them today if you'd like and report back.
Um.
Or include you guys in the email correspondence.
This is my thing, we, we don't have another meeting until, uh, first of October.
I know there's burn bans in place down south already, so.
So I guess, um, my question is, John, can we approve a burn ban upon the request of maybe the fire chiefs?
You can declare an emergency and have a meeting at, at any time you want to. So if the fire chiefs declare, want a burn ban, then you can declare an emergency, have a meeting with as little notice as an hour.
Okay.
And conduct the meeting that way.
Do it on Zoom also.
Possibly, yes, because you're not, you're not appropriating money, so.
Okay, you guys, you guys okay with that? Is there any questions on Mr. Cuttino?
Yeah.
You, you, will you be able to get ahold of them today?
Correct. Yep, I can do that.
Well, just, let, let us know what the consensus is, and if we need to have an emergency meeting, we'll.
We can do it.
We'll have one.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe, for bringing that up. Um, next, Linda Hanson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, Linda Hanson, League of Women Voters, Delaware County. I want to thank you for delaying a vote on the, uh, ordinance today in order to clarify it. And I also want to comment on a couple of things. At the Albany, uh, Town Hall, uh, Mr. Brand raised the home rule issue. And so in Indiana, just to clarify, uh, we have a home rule statute that grants counties power for any purpose not expressly prohibited by the constitution or statute or granted to another entity. However, this power is still subject to state law, and a county cannot create ordinance as a conflict with state regulations, such as those for planning and zoning. Mr. Brand, however, is correct in saying that the legislation establishing the criteria for solar-ready counties does not mandate, uh, counties adopt those criteria. And that without the funding that could have been a carrot for adopting the state standards, there's nothing to require that our ordinance meet those criteria, except perhaps good sense. Comment. Only, only humans have politics for two reasons. We are opinionated and we are egotistical. We think our opinions are preferable to others' opinions. Hence, the primary purpose and challenge of politics is to keep the peace among such creatures living together. This ordinance will not achieve that goal. Unlike the ordinance this one replaces, the process for developing this ordinance was not transparent. Despite Mr. Brand's multiple individual conversations with constituents that he has reminded us about, the document reveals that he has listened predominantly to those opposed to utility solar. Distaste for the process will not abate. The mechanism he has written into the ordinance to negotiate setbacks, claiming that they will be reduced to a hundred feet through neighborly negotiations, simply sets up perpetuate, for perpetuating bad feelings among neighbors. Setting a reasonable two hundred and fifty-foot setback at the outset, rather than an unreasonable setback with an unlikely sweetener, would have been more honest. I appreciate your consideration of possible changes in the ordinance. And I'd like to know, with what you're asking be done on it now, will it go back to the Planning Commission before it comes back to you?
I don't expect it to go back to the Planning Commission.
That's, that's not my intent.
No.
I hope not. Okay.
Even though that was requested by a, uh, an attorney representing a company at the last meeting, they recommended slash asked if it'd go back to the Planning Commission, but I don't expect that'll happen.
So any changes that you're making are going to be simply clarifying and, um, even what AEP asked for, so that the changes are not substantial enough to take it back.
Clarifying the property value guarantee language that was articulated by Mara Hoff and considering the, the changes from AEP. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Steve Hines.
Morning, Commissioners. Steve Hines, two seven oh six South Com Avenue, Muncie. Um, a few things I want to talk about. Um, so the comment about Randolph County having, uh, higher incomes while they don't have a big city, and a lot of people actually drive from Randolph County to Muncie or Delaware County for their jobs. Um, the burn ban, uh, all of those counties, I saw the map this morning. It was all southern Indiana, very southern Indiana, like the Ohio River. And but I'm okay with being more cautious. Um, the, uh, what was this, was there? Oh, uh, conflicts of interest. These, uh, projects are so large, it's rather hard to not know somebody that's going to be affected by them. Um, and then the last thing, I think I'll say, I think it's ironic that, or not ironic, I think it tells a big story, that the public utilities are watching this solar ordinance as closely as they are. Um, Mara Hoff comments last month, or last two weeks ago. Um, all of her questions are answered in the first sentence of Section B. No permit for construction shall be given by any department until any property, until all property value guarantee agreements have been filed with the DM MPC. That answers all of her questions from the last meeting. There is no, this isn't a high school elective. You don't get to just check a box and say, oh, it's done. I hope you guys, uh, approve it as is at your next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that was the last pers, uh, person signed up to speak. You're right, the burn bans really nowhere around here. There is one.
Like Ohio County.
Yeah, there, there is one up there, but the rest of them are all kind of southern. Um, okay, uh, Sheri, do you have any final comments?
Well, I'd like to suggest that, um, veterans, um, attend the stand-down out at the Heartland Hall tomorrow from ten to two. Uh, they're going to be doing a lot of different, um, giveaways and lunches being served. So any veteran, uh, we thank you for your service and show up to have some fellowship, yes, tomorrow.
Absolutely. Thank you. Is that all you have?
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Brand?
Yeah, the no-before training, we did really well on that. I would say a hundred percent. Uh, we had one person complete it this morning, even though late, and, uh, we were able to vet the list. There were a number of people that were no longer employees. We were taking them off the list. And I think as of this minute, we are a hundred percent complete with the no-before training, so thank you for that.
Anything else?
No, sure.
Um, one more item of business. I am not going to be available, um, for our next meeting, which is October, which should be Monday, October sixth. I would request that we move that meeting to Tuesday, October seventh, if you guys would.
I'm open.
Oh, absolutely. I prefer you be here. So could we, uh, we put that in a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to move our next meeting, um, to October seventh, and we have a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Also, prior to that meeting on, um, the seventh, we will have a finance meeting at eight forty-five. And Jenna will get that, um, posted. And John, you'll post the, uh, meeting date for the seventh, correct?
Yes, we'll take care of the notices for both of them.
Thank, okay, you'll do both. Okay, thank you.
I've got, I've got my staff working on it.
Thank you.
And I believe we want to have a stormwater meeting.
Yes, she's working on that as well.
Eleven o'clock. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Cuttino?
Yes, sir.
Just an update. I spoke with Chief Randy Reed. He's the president of the Delaware County Fire Chiefs Association. He has a group with the fire chiefs going right now. They're discussing what their options are, what their consensus is for the burn ban. And he will let me know in a couple hours what that is, and if they want to move forward with it, he'll give me the language to get with you guys.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay. No other comments? I would entertain a motion for recess.
So move.
Second.
A motion to recess and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Regan?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes. And recess.